Okay, good evening to, welcome to the Public Podcast, PPC tonight. For the September 5th meeting and we're going to go ahead and start off the evening with the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 22nd of 2019.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Do you want any discussions?
Any discussions or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, minutes are approved. Okay, and so we're going to go ahead and I'm going to go through the agenda tonight with public hearing. We're going to hear on the proposed Old Town Code amendments presented by Kristen. We are not actually going to adjourn with a decision or recommendation tonight. We are going to postpone that until September 26th. And we will also have welcome with public comment later in a few minutes here. So Trish is going to go ahead and open up with some announcements.
While everyone is still paying complete attention, I wanted to make an announcement that next week's open house would be September the 12th, open house on the Old Town Architectural Design Standards Guidelines.
Design Standards and Architectural Guidelines.
We have to think of a shorter title for that project, has been postponed. So at this point, there will be no meeting of the PPC in this room next Thursday, but we'll let you all know when that will be rescheduled. But we just found out late this afternoon that that open house is going to be postponed. The official word will come out tomorrow on the website and all those places. But we didn't want folks to think it was tonight's meeting was canceled, so we asked them not to officially do that until after we had everyone in the room and then we canceled next week. Okay, so now on to Kristen.
For those I haven't met, there are a few of you. I am Kristen Lee-Sin and I'm a senior planner with the Development Services Department. And you know, I edited this PowerPoint about 1,000 times and I feel like there's not enough information in here, so I'm going to back up a little bit. So just to catch people up, our Old Town SubArea plan was initially adopted back in 1999. And it was touched once in 2009 to remove the references to the potential bypass that was coming through. Otherwise, it hadn't been touched. In 2015, an Old Town Task Force was put together to talk about Old Town vitality and it dealt mostly with the Cultural and Business District. And it went to council and they made great recommendations. It went to the city council and the city council said, but wait a second, this doesn't address our residential issues at all. So, in updating those. So, one of the recommendations of the task force was to update the subarea plan and the design standards. And as part of that, we included the residential areas as well. So we updated the plan in 2018. And in that plan, were very specific, was a very specific action program. There were immediate actions for 2019 to 2020, short-term actions from 2021 to 2022, and longer-term actions from 2023 to 2030. We are in the process of implementing the immediate actions. So what we have, what we're talking about tonight are six of those. And we had meetings on August 8th and August 22nd to talk about those. And we did during the plan update, we had four open houses and it came six times to Planning Policy Commission and six times to the city council before it was adopted. So we did talk about these items then, but we are here talking about it again. So, are there any questions on the out, on what we've done so far? So, the first one that we are implementing is action number two, which is code revisions to reduce heights to three stories in the Cultural and Business District, CBD, to three stories in the multifamily high district, East Sunset Way only, so just right along here, and to two stories in the single-family duplex zone. So, we've done that in the CBD, the heights, the base height was 45 feet and you could go up to 65 feet with conditions such as set step backs above a certain floor, which means that your building gets moved further back at a certain level. And we took away the 65-foot maximum and now it's a 40-foot maximum for three stories, whichever is lower. In the multifamily high district on East Sunset Way, we kept the base height at 40 feet and said 40 feet or three stories, whichever is lower, and removed the maximum height. And we did the same thing. We initially weren't going to address multifamily medium, but we realized that multifamily medium, the base was 40 feet, but it was also, they still had a maximum height of 50 feet. And we thought, well, medium's supposed to have a lower density than high, so we made those two the same as far as the height goes. Any questions? Yes?
The, the two condo complexes then on, that are extant on Sunset would not be approved under these new standards?
Correct. And if this is approved, they'll become legally non-conforming, is what it's called.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Action number three, same table on the left, was to increase the impervious surface in the Cultural and Business District from 85% to 95%. And to increase the impervious surface in multifamily high on East Sunset Way from 50% to 75%. So, impervious surface means that you can cover that much more, you know, if you go up to 75%, you can now cover 75% of your property with parking lots or driveways or a building, whatever it may be that you need on that lot. But the heights have gone down in these areas. One of the reasons for doing this, the task force recommended improving, increasing the impervious surface in both of these. It, as an incentive, as a way to potentially help developers redevelop their properties. I will let you know too, the task force did not recommend reducing the heights in the CBD. They actually wanted to keep the four-story height there, but based on all the feedback that we got from the residents in the area, they were more concerned about keeping the character. And so the proposal was to go to three stories max, opposed to four. Action number four, code revisions to acquire ground floor commercial on Front Street. I will let PPC know, and actually those who are here last time, there's been a slight addition to this one. So, here, this again was a task force recommendation, trying to increase pedestrian activity on Front Street. And that's the idea of including commercial retail. The task force recommendation was to actually work with offices to move them off of Front Street and make more room for retail. The administration felt it opened it up a little bit more for property owners, if you said, opened it up to commercial and not just specifically retail. So it says, "commercial retail." So, the addition here is ground floor commercial retail includes those uses currently allowed in the CBD and are included in the subsections of this table, titled "Food and Beverage, Office Professional Financial, Retail Service and Medical." So, in our table of permitted uses, which I can show you if you want to see it, there are, it lists exactly which uses are allowed in the Cultural and Business District. And there are subcategories in each of those that are titled "Office Professional Financial, Food and Beverage." And those are the uses that would be allowed as ground floor retail. This doesn't prohibit any uses from going into Cultural and Business District, which is that those are the ones that we want in the ground floor and on the, on the front, on Front Street. Questions? And I know there was a question earlier today. Does this mean that an insurance company could come in even though that doesn't have in and out, you know, traffic that comes in and out without appointments? And that is what it means, that those would be allowed. So, you know, it's up to the commission if they want to change the recommendation. And you know, we had originally talked about, I didn't put it in here, it is in your packet, we had talked about potentially using active commercial. But as we worked our way up the food chain and talked to those higher-ups, that was decided that that would not be a part of an administration's recommendation. Yeah. So, this was our kind of way of, what do you call that?
Compromise.
It was, it was the mid-road, sorry. Yeah. Yeah. So, any thoughts on that?
I think it would be nice to have some type of title, though the previous one that we all kind of liked doesn't necessarily address it. I think that sometimes when you're saying ground floor commercial retail, it doesn't necessarily describe what, it sounds more limiting than it is. Right now, the proposal of the administration is to actually have a pretty wide berth. And I think it's easy to say, oh my gosh, we're really limiting what we're allowing to come in. But as I went through the table today, I mean, there's just, it's almost even, it's even, almost easier to say what isn't allowed than what is, because there's so much that we can do. So, I think it would be curious to think about maybe a way to be able to better explain that, rather than right now saying that we're requiring retail tends to make it seem more limited than it is.
Okay. Always come back to it. So, action number five was code revisions to allow small-scale retail in multifamily high on East Sunset Way. And so, we added a footnote to, again, the table of permitted uses, which I really need to show you all. One changed since the last thing, current planners were looking at this again and they said, wait a second. You can allow standalone use not to exceed 4,000 square feet. And then they said, is that gross? Is that net? Is that what? So, we clarified that it's gross square feet. So, that's an addition from your packet. But what this does, we currently allow, you'll know, you know, you go up and down Sunset and you say, but there are uses there. There are already some uses there. Some were grandfathered in because this was, the code was amended later, after some of those uses were already there. You can do it right now in an existing building, in an existing mixed-use building, but it can't exceed like 1,500 square feet or it can't exceed 4,000 square feet, but it still has to be inside a building. And that's been difficult for people who wanted to come in here and were having a hard time finding something and wanted to tear something down and build it or put it in a house that's there. So, this opens it up a little bit for some of those business owners, I hope. So, right now, I'm going to explain, I know I've been through this with PPC one more time, but I'm going to explain it one more time. Yes, Robin?
On the bunny, just so I understand, could you describe, how does the parking, parking restrictions work if it was a standalone use not to exceed 4,000 square feet, gross square feet? What parking regulations and restrictions would accrue to that type of development?
They are required to, they're required to put in, well, it's going to depend, but there are certain parking, there's a certain number of parking spots that's required for any type of use. So, a restaurant may require so many per square feet and, you know, a store is another one. We're going to get to the exemptions or the, in a minute, or the potential reductions in a minute.
Okay.
But those would also apply on Sunset as well. Yeah. So, if they're, but I will tell you, if they're required, if they go in and they have a 4,000-square-foot building and based on their use, they're supposed to put in 12 units, that could be reduced by 10% potentially. I mean, 15, yeah, 10%.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Transfer Development Rights is a program that the city has. And the city identified both receiving sites and sending sites. Sending sites are properties that are encumbered by, at least 50% of their property is encumbered by critical areas and are not likely to be developed, or if they are, it will be difficult. So, the cool deal is, if these people want to, who have these sending sites, they can sell their development rights to a developer who has a receiving site. And then that developer is able to build above and beyond what they, what the code currently allows. But recently, we adopted the Central Issaquah Plan. And the Central Issaquah Plan says, "We want all of our density to go in Central Issaquah." We also adopted an Old Town SubArea Plan, or updated it, that says, and the residents said, "We don't want more density here." So, it's logical then, that we would remove any receiving sites from Old Town to keep that additional density from coming here. So, that is what this proposal is. So, there is just, and I didn't put it in here because it's about seven or eight pages of text where you just mark out about eight words at a time. But it just removes any references to Sunset, to multifamily high, to multifamily medium, anything in Old Town where there's a receiving site. We're also proposing to update the map. So, everything that is gray right here, used to be red as a receiving site, but we are proposing to take all of those out, to remove those. Last one is number 15. Of, for those who maybe aren't familiar with the plan, there are 19 different items and I'm just, they're numbered by what number they are in the plan. We're trying to stay consistent. She went, wait, what happened to the eight between this? So, that's why.
I didn't see number one.
There was no number one either. We started with two. So, "Develop incentives that reduce parking requirements for neighborhood-oriented commercial projects." So, we had to come up with a definition for what a neighborhood-oriented business was. And what we came up with is, it is, "Neighborhood-oriented businesses have 10 or fewer locations throughout the United States and cater to the daily and/or weekly needs of the local community. Grocery stores and medical-dental services, no matter the number of locations, are accepted as So, what this means, this is our, I'm going to caveat this. All this goes into our land use code parking chapter, which is currently going through, our entitled land use code is going through a huge overhaul. So, this first one seems really big as a potential reduction, but it might change. So, right now, we allow for parking reductions in the CBD zoning district. Parking requirements for, and this is just CBD, the Cultural and Business District along front and right behind it, may be reduced by as much as now 35% as follows. So, they already can get, you just, you come into the CBD, you already get a 15% parking reduction, just for locating there. You can get another 10% parking reduction if you do a shared parking agreement, which is a formal legal document that we have this written up. The third one that we added is neighborhood-oriented businesses. If you meet the definition of a neighborhood-oriented business and you locate in the CBD, you could also get a 10% reduction of the required parking. Got it? Questions?
Yeah, so if somebody was to capitalize on all three of those reductions, could they actually get up to, what would that be?
35%.
Yeah.
And I will tell you that there are some people who, when they saw this one, whoa, that's too much. So, that's why I'm caveating this by saying, some of this may, some of this may go away. I don't know for sure, but just by the initial reaction, I have a feeling that it might.
An outlet selling ethical marijuana be considered a medical?
Well, medical marijuana, I don't believe is allowed in this zone, so.
It's not allowed?
No. No. Yeah. This is intended to be an incentive, neighborhood businesses, it's intended to be an incentive to help some of those smaller businesses locate here, because parking can be so expensive.
Didn't they say it was about $17,000?
It can go anywhere from about $20,000 to $60,000 per parking space. Yeah, that's a lot of money. And then this was still the last one. Oh, right now, we have, I'm going to skip ahead, this funky map that's turned sideways. North is to your left, so Front Street runs across the bottom. This was done back in 1986 and it was called, this was what they called the downtown. And we have a lot of policies that referred to this. And this is where these policies were initially allowed. It was called the Downtown Business District. We've changed it a little bit and we probably increased the size a little bit where these reductions could be applied. But we took that map out and said, anywhere in the CBD zone and MFH along East Sunset Way is where these would apply. And it's that if they have a change of use within an existing building, they don't have to add additional parking and no additional parking required for structural additions that are 10% less than the original building. That's what those are. Again, these may change, I don't know. All of this language that's being deleted, I haven't thrown this in here before, but it's all related to the Local Improvement District, which is no longer in effect. So, it didn't make sense to still have it in there. Same with the map. That's all I have. Any more questions or if you want to open it up?
I do have one more question. So, as far as the impervious surfaces, is 95%, is that a requirement or is that a cap?
That's a cap.
Okay, that's what I figured. Wanted to clarify.
Anything else?
Any other additional questions?
Yeah, I have one. There's, there's a, some wording, it's not actually in any of the presentation. I just have one question. There's a, there's a one place where the word "illuminate" was used.
Oh, we fixed, we fixed that. It's eliminate, thank you.
Good job.
Christopher caught that for us today. Yes.
The DC training.
So, knowing that, as the previous presentations, that the target audience for the kinds of retail that we're talking about that are addressed here are, we hope would be people who would walk from neighborhoods and ride bikes. Therefore, the target audience is not going to be driving cars, we hope, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, Kristen, what would be the process that the, that would be put in place if it turns out in a couple of years that we don't have enough, I know we have an excess now. We have a surplus of parking available at various times in the city. But what would be the process then, and this is absolutely hypothetical, if it turns out that we need more parking in CBD?
So, there are, Christopher, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are about three steps. And the first one would be enforcement and saying, putting up signs saying this, for example, is two-hour parking and it will be enforced.
Yeah.
You know, the difficulty in that is that then you also have to add staff or consultants that will enforce it. The second option is to put up meters and just time it out. Those also have to be enforced, but that be meters, but the meters then I think help pay for the enforcement. The last option would be to build a parking garage. That's what's been discussed.
I remember, okay. Thank you. That would be subject to extensive review before any of that.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Any other additional questions before we open up?
Janice?
Wasn't it previously stated that we're doing ongoing, like every biannual surveys of parking spaces?
We are.
So that we can monitor that and make tweaks to these policies?
Yes.
As needed.
Every two years, the parking is being, the parking study is being redone and re-looked at.
Okay, so there's a control cycle of monitoring and fixing.
Right. And there, there is a breaking point. So, right now, I think, I think we said last time, the max at, you know, Saturday afternoon from 1:00 to 2:00 was 67%. And if it gets to 85%, that's when you say, okay, we have to stop and reevaluate and figure out what we're going to do. Thank you. You're welcome.
I think we'll open up to public comment?
Sure, if there's no more questions.
Questions?
Is there anyone?
Open up to public comment and then we'll ask questions again.
Is there anyone on the list? Should I go?
There is no one on the list.
All right, so we're going to open this up.
They're going to wait to see what I had to say.
I do have a question.
Well, you have to come up.
If she can come up to the mic. Just tell us who you are.
Hi, my name is Al Jawani. We're looking at a piece of property on Rainier Boulevard, so I think it falls into this district. My question really was for timing. It sounds like there's some changes or still evolving, this motion or whatever you call it. And I was just wondering, you said that it may still change. Is it before the September 26th meeting or is it beyond the September 26th meeting?
So, no. So, the public hearing, once it goes through, we talked, the public hearing will continue until September 26th. And at that time, the Planning Policy Commission will make a recommendation. After that, it goes to city council. However, we don't have dates set for that yet. So, I don't know what it will be after that, but we are doing our very best to keep our website updated. If you want to give me your email, I can always put you on a list too, to let you know. And same with anybody here, if you want to be on our email list, write it on that sheet up there and we'll get you on our distribution list, so you know what's going on.
Do they have a rough timeline?
The goal was originally at the end of the year, but now that council has so many meetings scheduled for budget, everything's been pushed out a little bit. So, it might be January, February, depending on when they can fit this in. We're hoping still by the end of the year, but it's not completely up to us.
Any additional comments from the public?
Good evening, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Just more like questions or clarifications. Pervious concrete, is it considered pervious in terms of the 25%?
I don't think so.
I didn't think so. It shouldn't be, thank you. Front of the building, 20-foot deep, it's got to be retail. And you've got, these buildings go back a lot more than 20 feet. So, you've got possibly other stories in the back that maybe will be office or something else. Is there going to be, like, say, 80% of the front has to be retail, 20-foot deep, and 80% of the front of the building, so that the back of the building or the upper part of the building will have a Front Street entrance to, to those other uses? If the whole front is taken up by retail, how would you get to the other business?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Okay, good. And I don't know, is there a difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana? And that might be clarified.
I can answer that one. They're all in the code now, just as marijuana. And they are not permitted in the CBD.
And for your, how much along the front, we use the exact same code that's in the Central Issaquah Plan right now. It was, quite frankly, a little easier to remain consistent. And we did talk about it. Some of these, what you do is you put retail on the front and they have tucked under parking in the back. Or they have, you know, storage in the back or something else that goes back there. We talked about a requirement, but these buildings are pretty narrow as it is. And I, you know, we tried to imagine somebody putting in 50, it was, our discussion, trying to decide on what that would have been, I feel like might have been arbitrary. And we didn't have anything to base it on. So, you know, I can't see, maybe somebody does 25 feet of retail across and 20 feet deep, I don't know. But, and that's something to consider. Central, though, is worded the exact same way and there's no limit across the front.
Right. I thought the whole part that, I thought we ended up, and I'm just saying this out loud, is that the whole frontage that's on Front Street has to be retail. But if it's access through the alley, or if it's access through something else, it can be something else, as long as we get that 20-feet depth off of Front Street.
You know, you may have, if you have residential above, you know, I used to live in Chicago and Philadelphia and you have retail, but you still have to have mailboxes and space for people to get upstairs to residences. So.
Right.
Maybe.
Right. And that's just a little spot though, so I think that would still be okay.
Yeah. So, that we can, if, if you all would like, if that's something you choose, we can make that a little clearer, that it takes up the entire front, with the exception of access or something like that.
Any additional public questions, public comments?
My name is JJ Lynn from 180 Front Street. First of all, I'm glad that we've at least postponed, I guess, the voting on these proposals. Not because I don't think they're going to be implemented, but, you know, I looked at the whole packet and for us to have public comment, let's say you invite the public and then already have a whole sheet in the very back saying that you're going to sign off on it, kind of seems like I'm just wasting my breath because you were just going to sign that. And so, I think from a process standpoint, it makes more sense that you don't pass something on the same day that you have a public comment, because then, what's the point of the public comment if you're just going to pass it? So, I think, I appreciate, maybe that wasn't your intention, but at least I appreciate that happening. I do have some comments on kind of how a process of all of these meetings have gone. I've gone, I've been to, this is my first time actually, oh, two times ago was my first time attending public meetings like this. But I think, as commissioners, as you sit there, this. But I think, as commissioners, as you sit there, I kind of imagine the questions kind of I would ask. And I think today, you've seen me before, and I had a lot of opposition to kind of the commercial retail. So I think that making it a little broader makes it less, I think, intrusive on property owners. And I think it's better for developers or people who want to look to redevelop their property. So I think broadening the definition of commercial and retail was helpful. But, I guess the question I would have if I were a commissioner would be, let's implement, let's say we implement these, that specific one, commercial, retail, whatever the rules are. The question I would have is, on Front Street, what businesses would be eligible to come in, and what aren't? I don't think we've done a thorough analysis of, let's say we pass these, and, you know, obviously, there's this term, I think you said it was a non-conforming user, you know, but let's do a count of what businesses can be there. So I know there's an apartment building on Front Street right now. Well, if we had this rule in place, that would not be a use that you could do. I know we mentioned that there was some construction company that had opened up a business. Maybe that wouldn't be available. And so I think it's reasonable to ask the question on, if we pass these rules, what businesses that exist right now on Front Street are able to continue? Or if they move, or if they somehow redevelop it under the code, maybe they wouldn't be able to exist on Front Street. I think that's a reasonable question to ask on the implications. And I didn't hear a discussion about that, and I was interested and hoping the commission would ask the city to maybe do a little bit of work on that, now that we have time. In terms of the public comment, you know, I'm of the feeling that it's a down zone, and, you know, my property value will go down. But, you know, that's up to opinion. And, you know, with all due respect, I'm going to reference last week's, last session's meeting minutes where I brought that up. And, you know, as a commission, you've entertained, you know, a lot of my questions, so I appreciate that. But with all due respect to Christopher, who I know, he is not the expert on valuing property. My question specifically was, what do you think will happen to the property values when you read down zone? To ask, you know, the development, people in development, is the easy way, but I don't think we've addressed that. And sure, we also talked about in the last meeting, I'm just referencing the meeting minutes, you know, we have, the community wants to keep the building to three stories, or 40 feet, or whatever that is. That's fine. But I don't think we've done a thorough analysis of property values on Front Street, and whether or not that will decrease or increase. And if you don't have that information, well, maybe your policy goals is to, you know, discourage high development in the area, and that's fine. But I'm proposing the question, and I don't think it's been fairly or, you know, answered. And what I'm looking for are facts, not an opinion from someone. And so someone who can give you maybe a, let's say, an expert opinion, if the city would go to the assessor's office for property and ask those questions. And obviously, I can't get the city to do it. The planning commission hasn't, in the last two planning commission meetings, been receptive to that idea. And here I am again, at the public comment meeting, asking the commission to look into whether or not property values will decrease. Maybe they'll increase. And I think it is a fair question to ask, and that hasn't been answered in terms of people who have the expertise to answer that. And so I want to thank you for giving me a chance to talk, and it's been an interesting experience. Thank you.
Any additional public comments? No. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we just need you to step to the microphone, so that we can all hear. Have it on the record.
Hi, my name is Carl Polly. I live at 225 First Avenue. And for disclosure, my wife is also the mayor. But what I was wondering is, what is the intention of this? What are we trying to accomplish? Are we trying to activate downtown, so that we've got a lively nightlife scene, or what is the goal?
The goal of which part? The active, the commercial retail?
The proposed amendment, the code for the Central Business District.
For commercial, on the first floor? Right, it's to activate the, to get more pedestrians and more activity on the, right on the sidewalk, and to activate then all the neighboring businesses as well? That came out in the Old Town Subarea Plan and the task force.
Yes, go ahead.
So just for clarification, if it's a multi-story building, the first floor has to be retail? Or it has to be mixed use, or can it be residential?
If it's new, if you're coming in with a new building, the first floor would need, and it fronts Front Street, if you have frontage right on Front Street, then your first floor, 20 feet deep from Front Street, needs to be commercial slash retail. And there's a whole list of uses that you can choose from.
Yeah, I saw that. I wasn't sure if it applied. If you're doing multi-family, you couldn't do that on Front Street.
You could, as long as you had something on the first floor that was retail/commercial. And it doesn't affect the uses that are there now. They all still get to exist there, because this would be just for new buildings coming in.
But to go on his point, if there's, say, there's a fire, or the place burns down, and it's an existing operator, if you wanted to rebuild, would that affect him?
We have a non-conforming chapter now in the code that regulates things like fires and floods and those kinds of things. And Christopher, help me, if you lose 75 percent of it, you can rebuild the way it was?
There's different scenarios, but basically, yeah, it depends on how much of the structure.
Well, but, and his question is, I think, could the use still go back there, right?
Yeah.
And not the structure itself? So the structure's one part, but the use, I would assume, can still go there.
Right. If you're an apartment building on Front Street and it burns, you can still rebuild that, as an apartment building.
It doesn't have to be exactly the same. It could be.
Right, right. And as Christopher said, it depends on how much of it is burned versus how much we would have you comply with the new regs. But it's pretty lenient, because, as you know, we've had a lot of floods in the past. And so we're trying to help business owners that go through something like that, to not give them more hardship than they already had.
From our perspective, I think this is a great change. And I understand his concern about valuation. And I would, I would support that, actually get an independent review. I don't think that would hurt anyone, just from that perspective, except from time perspective. But I think that overall, there's a lot of us's to this change, so we're definitely for it, if that makes any difference.
Great. Good to know. Thanks.
Any additional public comments? No? Any additional? Okay. As being that there are no more additional comments, I'd like to go ahead and close the...
Continue.
Oh, continue the public comments until September 26.
At 6:30.
6:30.
Well done.
Thanks for the queue.
That was so subtle, wasn't I?
It was pretty subtle, yes. Okay, so now that we've closed with...
From what you've heard, any more discussion?
Just to clarify, that's also Sunset. You were saying it's Front Street, but it's Front Street as well as Sunset.
First floor retail is only on...
It's in the CBD, which is Front, and, yeah, that's requirements on Front Street. Yeah, not Sunset.
Correct. Not Sunset, just CBD.
I have a question in general, to follow on from that gentleman's comment. When a city, be it Issaquah or another city in this state, is going through a planning process and a rezoning process, is it a requirement to look at valuations in any way, shape, or form as part of that process, or is it valuation of individual properties or collective valuation? Is that a requirement? Is there a legal obligation to do that? Is there a legal exposure when a city either upzones or downzones property? It's not. So it's not part of our, per our purview in looking at policy changes?
Correct.
But that I take is, that's my understanding, anyway. But from the city's perspective, valuation ever an input variable into decision-making, such as we're going through here in Old Town?
For example, when we did Central Issaquah, we actually upzoned how many properties? A bazillion properties. And part of it was, we were trying to get affordable housing to come in. And so we were trying to do the valuations, so that folks could come in and propose affordable housing, based on the height that we were giving the property and setbacks. We were trying to do this magical calculation that would allow an applicant to actually pencil out some affordability in their, in their development. And so in that case, we did a lot of property valuations to make sure, and we had our folks from Affordable, you know, Arch that we work with, and we had a market analysis person that's sort of that expert economics guy that, and they all were working out the formula to see if I was a developer. And we even had developers come in and use their own properties to see if they could pencil it out, you know, in a world that they were going to redevelop, to see. And so in that case, the valuations were very important to the city because of the outcome we were hoping for. We were hoping that an applicant could come in and help us provide affordable housing, because we were giving them so much value added. But that's rare that we go through that much, because a lot of it is, you know, the market's going to dictate a lot of what the values are, and we're just trying to keep the process open and the uses open, so that folks can come in and try and be creative with their properties. And again, in Old Town, the properties are so small and constrained, we're trying to be really creative.
As a general statement, valuation does not play a role in the decision. Is that a broad-brush statement? Specific use cases, I get. But in general, just to perhaps allay some of the concerns here about our decision-making process. And so I understand better.
Would the Economic Vitality Commission be looking at this in conjunction with us at the same time?
It is going to them on the 18th.
Okay, so there is someone that is actually currently looking at the same plans we are from a different perspective.
Right. And we didn't, you know, with Central Issaquah, we didn't actually look at, what is it going to do to this existing property owner's value? It was really more for developers. And if we're going to acquire this much structured parking, will it pencil out for developers? What we're asking them to give us, you know, as far as structured parking, or landscaping, or whatever it was, can they still build and make a living out of it?
Right.
I have one kind of procedural question, that's something I didn't quite understand. On page 41 of 45, excuse me, in the third paragraph, after, it's the third whereas, the comment period where, the comment period for this decision ended on September 6, and the appeal period ended on September 20. And I guess my question is, that's kind of a flat statement that's using a past tense verb for something that hasn't occurred, so I don't...
And PPC, and this is good you brought it up, because in Development Commission, you guys do this differently than we do in PPC. And it was good that someone mentioned this. What we've always done is we draft a findings of fact, as if all goes well and there aren't any changes. However, often PPC makes many, 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 many changes, and we have to go back and redo the findings of fact that then are approved, you know, that the chair signs off on. Whereas Development Commission, you all usually make your decision, and then you do the findings of fact at a later meeting. Whereas we try to help out the process by having at least a draft template for you all to look at. And then, like you said, you know, it said illuminate instead of eliminate, you know, there are some, you know, there are some issues that you find. And because there's going to be an extended public hearing, I need to go back and adjust them, because that's a change that I didn't know when I drafted these. So I'll have to do some tweaking, because things change.
It's basically a procedural, because of the way these two commissions work, this one allows us to do the process, but it would, and it will not require us to sign off on something that, in advance of it actually happened.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Before we close, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, ma'am.
It's all yours.
So I just want to be clear. The things I heard were, Joy, you brought up that requiring retail seems a little bit limited, and maybe we could find another way to say that.
Right. We were talking about active/commercial, and it sounds like not everyone is, everywhere is in agreement about that terminology. But the point of the terminology, I think, was to be able to, instead of saying retail required, which sounds more limiting than when you actually do a deep dive and see how many allowed uses there are. And so kind of trying to kick around an alternative to active/commercial.
Thank you. I'm just making sure I have my to-do list. And was there anything to do with the retail required on the front, and how much is required across the front? Do I need to make amendments?
I think we all felt that it was...
I read, yeah. I read it as being that it was all the way across.
Correct, and that's the way I read it, too.
But maybe, okay. All right, just want to make sure. Thank you.
So anything, any other new things?
Those were the two I had.
Okay. So for the public hearing in a couple weeks, there's no new information that you all want, other than what Kristen just, and a new findings of fact. Thank you. Any other pieces to that? Okay. And just for your PPC fun, there's another public hearing that night as well. So bring your public hearing hats, because we're also starting the Comprehensive Plans Public Hearing that same night. That public hearing will also be continued to a date in October, I believe it's, I want to say the 10th. So you'll be perhaps ending this public hearing on that night and starting another one. So the fun never ends. So just, and do I know yet how many folks might be here for the 26th? Oh, someone's making a face. So no Jason, yes Robin, excellent. Yes Randy, Janice, excellent.
I'm a no right now, but.
Okay. And so Joy is a maybe. Jason's totally no? Totally no. Okay. And Ron is a maybe? Okay.
Kristen, I will, I will not be here on the 24th of October.
The 24th of October, okay.
Unfortunately, the, oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a joint meeting with my old partners in crime at the DC.
You speak both of our language. We need you.
So no, October 24th, okay.
You know, I guess I would have a question. So from what it sounded like, when I read the document, you guys were like, yes, we want to offer these parking requirements, and it can be up to 35 percent. And so when I read that, I'm thinking that the city's telling me, this is what we stand by. And now it's like, well, there's some fluidity, we've had some pushback. I would love to hear the definitive, you know what, you can pick two of the three, and we're putting all three of them at different percentages, and you get to pick and choose how you do that. Or, you know what, we're going to, we're going to say, yep, it's 35 percent. I would, I would love it if maybe in the next couple weeks, we get a hard clarification of, this is what we are backing, versus like, well, maybe, but...
Well, it's not that we got pushback, per se, it's that the whole other code is moving along like a big ship. This is kind of a littler ship, but there's a big ship of a code amendment coming through, and they're looking at all the parking standards. But we didn't want to wait, because we got clear direction from the plan, that we want to do an incentive for neighborhood-oriented business.
I like it.
And so we tucked that into this process, knowing that as we get down the road next year, when we're doing the big amendment, that all parking might change. Not just downtown parking, but everybody's parking may change. And so it's not that they're backing off this, that they said, no, it's good to give Old Town some more tools.
Okay.
But it's not that they're like, oh my god. I mean, so they're real happy that we're doing this, knowing, though, that there's a big changes, you know, down the horizon next year.
I'm just saying that these, we are, right now, we are addressing specifically Old Town, and that won't necessarily be citywide for, you know, in all these circumstances. This is a very narrow focus, but right now, we're backing it. It's not like this policy could...
And if it makes you feel better, you get to review the parking.
Yes.
You get to review the entire land use code when it comes through. So truly, keep these things in mind, too, when it's coming through.
Can I follow up on that question, just for somebody here looking to acquire a piece of property, following up on that? Given what you just said, that all parking might change, if I, if I was to buy a piece of property on Rainier Avenue, thinking, assuming these regs are in place, did I hear you say then that next year, those requirements might change again, so that if I'm halfway through my plant, my permit processing, I might have the ground shift onto me? Is that what I heard? Or I understand?
I would say it a different way. If you're going through, we've notified the folks that have permits in the pipeline right now, that have land use permitting, going through to let them know that we're working on changes, and so they need to be aware. And if they can go fast enough and get their... And if they can go fast enough and get their building permit, that allows them to have those standards forever. Or at least until, unless they don't build on how many years, if they don't take advantage of their building permit. But if you haven't gotten to that vesting yet, like for example, if I bought the property and tomorrow I come in with a less than satisfactory application, that would not be vested. It has to be complete, it has to have gone through the process. But we try to be upfront when we're working on code changes so that applicants are aware that, that changes could happen. And of course, when we were doing Central, a lot of people waited to come in because they knew they were going to be upzoned. And on the other times that when we're going to make changes that are less than upzoning, there's a flood to get, of people to come in before they, their change, so that they can take advantage of the, the previous ones.
Thank you.
So it works both ways.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have, actually I have a question, I just thought of, that's relevant to retail for Christopher.
Sure.
Christopher, there was a very extensive article recently in the Seattle Times that focused on, on retail and what the state's trying to do. And it said that retail had, in the state, statewide, has gone down by 11% in the last two years, I think. Do we have any insight into the state of, I mean, we talked about it a little bit before, but I don't think we got into whether there's retail in Issaquah in general, much less the CBD is level, up, down, whatever.
Yeah, I would say no real hard numbers, but one thing I will say, related to what we're talking about with that, the discussion about whether it's limited to only allowing retail on the bottom floor versus allowing other kind of office and commercial uses. One thing I will say, and one of the reasons we've kind of come around to leaving it open to all commercial uses, is I know based on the inquiries and, and interest that we've seen in the vacant properties that are in downtown right now, that pendulum is not swinging towards office at all. The inquiries we're getting about those vacancies are primarily retail uses. So that, that to us is the indicator that, that the mix that we have right now works, it's good, there's no reason to change that. And like I said, it is, it's good to see the people that are coming in and asking about those properties are primarily interested in doing retail.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Robin? Randy? Janice? Listen? Joy? Okay, being that there are no more comments, let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:30?
6:30.
Sorry, 7:32.
7:20.
7:20.
That was like a.